Okay. This is a meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There's a time for public comment during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item 8. Per our procedures, if you would like to make a comment at public comments, please go ahead and fill out one of those cards and they will be collected shortly before public comment section. Our first item on the agenda is the Michigan Leadership Institute. Oh, wait, oh, I've got a sticky note. We need to appoint a board secretary since Mrs. Covell is not here.
Yes, she's on her way.
She's on her way?
She went to the wrong location, but she asked me to let you know she was on her way.
Okay. All right, she will be here shortly and we'll just keep notes until she gets here. Thank you very much. So, we are now up to Michigan Leadership Institute. We're really excited to begin working with you on our superintendent search, so I'm going to turn everything over to you.
Okay. So, appreciate being able to come back and work with the Board of Education on probably the most important decision you're going to make in the next few years and hopefully as for many years to come. Obviously, some big shoes to fill with Dr. Washburn here for 20 plus years, maybe 17 or so, so that's highly unusual in the state of Michigan. However, when we did the Potaski search, they had four superintendents of 98 years, so there are little ways to go for you. There's always a hill to climb, right? Something to look forward to. So, we talked about different timelines when we were here last time. I put together a draft calendar to look for that January 1st start time. And again, if that doesn't work, we could always kick the can down the road until July 1st, which is never a problem. But I really think in talking to our colleagues around the state too, that Forest Hills is that 1 in 500, maybe 3 in 600 or 700 in the state of Michigan that people are going to come up for. So, I don't feel any problem with the January 1st start time. Bloomfield Hills, another one of those exceptional districts out there, they're still trying to fill prior to the school year. So, they took on that challenge to do that. And we've been in contact because Michigan Leadership Institute is also doing that search, so the consultant over there and I have already had conversations about candidates. So, I'll pass this out. Again, it is a draft, and one of the most important things we need to do is to make sure everybody can attend the necessary meetings, interviews, decision process, and so forth. So, going through this, I'm just going to keep one and give you extra copies for other board members and that. So, what we have with this, because I believe you guys start before Labor Day with school, correct?
Correct.
So, I looked on a website and was able to determine that. So, we would like to get a preliminary posting out there in August. I've got August 25th. We could certainly bump that forward if we needed to. When I say forward, I'm talking August 15th, August 20th, but that should do it as you work your way through the schedule. September 1st, I would want input from each individual board member on the three questions we basically ask that are listed below here. What are the unique skills, characteristics, qualifications that we want in our new superintendent? What are some of the challenges facing the district in the next 3 to 5 years? And then also, what are some of the points of pride? I would accumulate those because you would send them back to me personally, individually. I will put them into one file without identifying any of you, and each board member can see how the other board members are feeling and what's important. Okay? So, we're trying to gather that information. We can do it as a group. I have found boards prefer this methodology of just giving me their list. It doesn't need to be in a volume form or a book form. It can be phrases, it can be bullet points, and then I'll put the final document together yet. But then you'll see where each one of you stand as far as what are the expectations of the person we're bringing on board. So, that would be due by September 1st, and I would send you an email to remind you that this is a due date and so forth. Then, the week of September 4th, which I realize is right after Labor Day, but you've already been in school for two weeks, so hopefully people are calm, they're in a routine, and things are moving forward. I would come into the district. We had scheduled two days to come into the district and meet with a variety of focus groups. We would work with Central Office to, again, the Board of Education to identify what groups you think it's essential that I meet with. These are basically hour-long meetings, just scheduled one after the another, after another, starting, let's say, at 9:00 AM and going through 6:00 or 7:00 PM each day. Taking copious notes of the whole thing. Those final notes will be shared with the Board of Education as well, so you will have all the input from the focus groups, even though we will not identify anyone and we will not even tell you what group that came out of because it doesn't really matter. It's input, that's what we're after, and we want people to have those honest conversations with us. Now, board members, you are not invited to the focus groups. In fact, we're going to tell you, "Stay away, please," because if you are there, people can alter their comments, and we want to have nothing but honesty. So, in fact, it's funny, at times the focus groups, I'll tell them, "I'm not going to ask you your names," because then if a board member says, "Well, did Susie say this?" I can truthfully say, "I don't know." It doesn't matter. We're gathering information, so that's how we do that. At the same time, through the first, we have it marked on the 1st to the 10th, we would run a survey via your website where people would be able to go in there anonymously. We're not going to ask them if they're a parent or a staff member or anything. It's strictly anonymous, and they will be able to submit information to the same three questions. Once that is completed, all the input will be downloaded and shared with the Board of Education as well. Again, we're trying to be inclusive and not exclusive in this process. Yes?
I'd expect somebody from California.
You know, you can't, it's just like your public meetings. I was in Hillsdale County one night for a public meeting and they had somebody, of course, we were on the web doing it, and somebody came in from Georgia and they were peddling their wares for five minutes to the Board of Education, something you were selling. All right? It's an open meeting, you know, people can do that. We understand that can happen, but I think you're going to see some commonalities in the comments and so forth. You're always going to get an outlier as far as a comment. You need to realize that. That's not our focus. We want to focus on the common.
Can you finish that? McRively texted them, "I'll just speak to one person, doesn't do the next 25."
You really can't. You hope people will be open and honest about the process as well. We will stress that, but that can happen. But again, hopefully there's some commonality as we go through that. And you start looking at writing styles and the way things, and I know you can try to hide it, but hopefully people will be open and honest as we go through that. So, we will have all that information on the input, and then from that, I will develop a profile and a posting, which we would run it by the Board of Education. I will send it to each one of you. I will ask you not to wordsmith it because we'll never get it out if you do that, but obviously if there's something missing or something we've overlooked, we need to catch that and fix that. Or if there's a mistake in it, we want it absolutely perfect going out there. And then we'll get it out to the various sites no later than the 15th of September. Okay?
And will there be, between the, when you get the focus groups, we got like the week of September 4th, last, 7, 9, 10, 12, so that's about 4 through 12, you've got focus group work going on, and only a few days later going, having all of that condensed and put out, you know, into a posting, is there a point at which you come to the board and say, "These are what we found. Does this sound like what you..."
That would actually be the posting and profile I would send to you electronically. I can certainly come up if you'd like to do that in person, but we typically send it out to you, you review it, say, "Hey, it looks good," or "Can we switch this or change this?" We want to get it right for the district, but I'm not sure it requires a meeting.
Okay.
In fact, I don't think I've had a meeting with the board in about four years of doing it, but I'm more than willing to do it.
Okay.
It's just easier email, in all honesty.
Well, thanks, Sam, for getting a focus group with the public. If we are, which goes out, the only way to interact with us in those same questions is by us representing our community.
Yes.
Okay. So many of us are new, and we didn't even know what it is we're looking for, so we have to type, and for some merit, they're cutting us together, they're going outside and inside of each other.
You can, absolutely, we can do that, but at the same time, I did provide you a sample within our documents that we sent to the school district. I believe it was the Celine School District that I sent to you, so another high flyer out there as far as I'm concerned with an excellent reputation and so forth. You can take a look at that. There's going to be about 90% of it, I'm going to tell you right now, that it's going to be common for a lot of districts. You want somebody with the ethics, you want somebody that loves the children, somebody that's going to work with teachers, that would communicate or collaborate, or those things are going to be there. What we're really looking for is that other 10%, what sets Forest Hills aside from others. I think you want the ethical person. I think you want somebody that loves all children. I think you want somebody that works with the teachers and the administrators and so forth, who will work with the community, will be visible and approachable in the community. Those are some common traits we see through. I don't care if it's a Marley that's a K-8 school district or a Forest Hills that has, you know, close to 10,000 students. You're going to see some of those common traits.
And how do we figure out four focus groups?
So, I'm here, I think, I didn't list them on this particular page, but it can be staff, elementary teachers. For example, in Hamilton, we actually went to two or three different elementary buildings to hear them, and some of the elementary staff came together from a variety of buildings, secondary staff, support staff, ministerial association. It can be athletic boosters, board boosters, it could be service club members. It's people you think we ought to hear from. It's going to be your administrators, your central office administrators, people like that that will want some input. It is not typically a public forum. Okay? We have done those in the past, but most people have opted to use the website. What we're finding out, in all honesty, is that people are just extremely busy. In the smaller focus groups, people have appreciated the fact they get time to speak up. And through these focus groups also, I will tell you, we'll get off track a little bit and we'll discuss some other things that are going on in the district. That won't make it into the profile or the notes that I share with you, but that helps me talk to the potential candidates that we're going to be working with so they can learn more about the district. Again, we want no surprises for the Board of Education or any of these candidates as we go through. So, we are going to be as transparent as you can be.
And so, how do we figure that out? How do we communicate with you and say, "We'd be nice to hear the feedback from some people"?
I will probably work with Val.
Okay.
Okay? And we will start determining those groups. We will find the dates that we want to hold those meetings. I will have Val, I've got a little blurb she can put out to invite different groups. Let's say it's the Rotarian or the Service Club leadership that you want in. Here's a blurb you can put out there to invite it here's the time. And sometimes people can't make the designated time we have for their group, like they can't do 10:00 in the morning, but they could be there at 2:00 PM for that group. That is fine. I have no problem with that. The only people that I want to keep in their separate group are the administrators. Okay? That is some sacred ground, hearing from them, that I want in a separate group. But one community group versus the other, there has to be some crisscross. I think your athletic boosters and your music boosters hopefully get along well enough so that everyone sat there, that wouldn't be a problem. Some communities, that can be, but, you know, we can certainly work through that.
About how big do you think these groups are, John? What's your goal?
We've had people 5 to 25.
Right.
Okay? We don't want them so big that it's not personal.
Right.
Okay? And again, that's the comment we've already received many, many times. It's so nice to meet in a small group because we know we've been heard and somebody else isn't always drawing us out. So, we're very cognizant of that.
The question, how many groups do you typically work with?
Wow.
Focus groups, you know, is it typically like eight or nine or 15 or...
It depends on the district, if you have...
Okay.
Most districts, it's probably closer to eight.
Okay.
But you're talking about larger districts here. You're talking about probably multiple meetings with elementary teachers or multiple meetings with secondary teachers or whatever, so we're going to have an expanded group there. And I think in our proposal, we had two days set aside for that. If we need to do three, we'll work those details out. Again, we want to be inclusive and not exclusive as we do this. Okay? I will need timely response from you on emails. Valerie has already given me your contact information, so once we get this calendar set, I will probably send you an email just to test it, to make sure I've loaded it correctly. Just a quick response would be great. Hey, thanks, got it, whatever, that would be it. Okay?
Can I ask one more?
Sure.
On the focus groups, so does it behoove us, does the board typically work into an agenda ahead of that, some, an item for discussion about what those groups are, or does it just one person kind of look around a committee, decide, the president decides? We have open discussion about what those groups are and yes, those...
I've never had a board go through open discussion to talk about who those groups are. You know, we've done, just recently did Kalamazoo Risa, okay? So, 35,000 kids in multiple communities and school districts and so forth. They set up the groups that they thought were most important for me to discuss. One of those groups was their foundation board. Okay? That's who they wanted me to meet with. Ministerial Association, they wanted me to meet with. So, they start, we met with all the local superintendents. Okay? So, it's the important groups, and it's not to say nobody doesn't qualify for that, but we're focusing on the people that are going to have some of that intimate knowledge of the school district for whatever level they're at. Could be a robotics or a, I don't know if you have an academic booster or something like that. We certainly want to include people like that.
And do you typically, when you're thinking about the different types of groups, I mean, most of these are somehow affiliated with the district somehow. Do you ever have community groups that are just community members?
We've had some small groups that way, but usually there's a connection some way. You know, when I talked about service clubs, they may not, you might have some older gentlemen or women in the service clubs, and they really don't have any direct connection to the school district, except they've lived in Forest Hills all their lives, so they do have some knowledge and some ownership in this place, and we want to gather that information. So, we can set those up if need be. That's not a problem. I'm going to do a lot of listening, all right, and a lot of writing, and then I get to go home and do a lot of typing, all right? Thank God, I used to be a business education teacher and I used to teach typing, so I can type fairly well. But, you know, it's one of those things, you need all the information, so it's the groups you feel that I should be speaking with. Okay? And you can start a list with Val, but I don't really think you need a board meeting to do that. If you know of a group, I would send it to Val and we'll start working on that.
Right, I was going to say, that's just what I mean. There's, you have so many, filling it up is not going to be the problem. I don't think for any of us individually, and that's just what I, how we coalesce around, this is our group, because we could probably add and add and add. So, I just didn't know if that had to be done openly in public and how otherwise we would do it with the reads.
No, it's not necessarily a board decision.
Right.
You know, it's gathering input for Michigan Leadership Institute, which then will be shared with everybody, but it does not have to be a board decision of who those groups are.
Would we list it on the website, say, "We use our focus groups," or just so transparent to you?
Perhaps, probably once it's, once it's set, as part of our timeline.
We could set the schedule and show everybody what it is.
Okay. Now, I want to know that we're going to be a lowing room and somebody decides that there may be another group that we missed because there's so many of them, or that we just don't think anybody else from the board is being heard. Think that, you know, look at the, you know, to list ten groups and the community looks at it and says, "Why did you put X, Y, and Z?" And it's like, okay, or if there's someone we can find, like what you said, maybe music and athletic boosters, or maybe not, you know, maybe that's, it's two separate issues that's going on. I just want to make sure that if the, if the list gets set, I don't know who's making the final decision on the list, I just want to make sure we're not excluding anybody that would be, is a possible we'll have to deal with later. You know, like, you know, if a decision is made that we're only doing 10 and we have rooms of 15 or whatever, so...
Well, we're going to hear some complaints that I can't make the 9 o'clock time. Okay? I get that, but all those folks also have the ability to go on the website and fill out a survey. So, you might find people that fill out a survey but also attend a focus group as well. So, you talk about the double dipping, yes, that can happen.
I think I've listed, I think I've listed a little from up on anybody being able to, I mean, outside of our own community, just of the climate of the world right now. And so, is there a reason you can't put parent, staff, community member? I mean, are you broad enough or could people just...
Yes. If people are going to go to the trouble of looking up Forest Hills if they're from Oregon and trying to put input in it, we can't stop them.
Can we have a separate one go up to parents, up to staff, and then one on the website? Is that not possible? And I don't know what you've seen, it's your experience.
Well, and I think what you find out, though, if you send one to parents and you send one to staff and one to students or whatever it might be, now you're starting to identify different groups, and so the anonymous part of that is taken away a little bit. And people start having questions.
If it went to you and not to us, then you would be able to strip that information.
We could try to set it up so it went to the MLI organization instead of the school district, but I still, people, if they find it and they want to provide input, they can do it.
I just, my concern is that one individual can fill it out 50 times. I mean, and I think the world suggests that that is a possibility, you know, very real possibility, and 10 individuals can fill it out 500 times, and now we have this big signal that it's really not a big...
I think you can do it by a phone number.
I don't know, I don't know.
You can just buy a phone number and keep it anonymous. I just filled one out when you were going to the campaign. I got sent a, you know, survey of, you know, like the things that were reported to school, and I think only like 2,000 people, that was by the phone, and I said to her, "I think this is really important, you should do it and board it." She couldn't get into it because the phone number was not attached to it. So, I think there might be a way. My fear is this too, is that it turns into somebody gets a whole group of people typing in together, and not that they would, but that's exactly what the great world is, you know, and with, you know, just the AI kind of running up and kind of taking over and stuff, I, if we could attach it to a phone number that's already attached to school, it wouldn't be a person's name, and you would be the only one to see it. Then to say you have to log in with a phone number, then you've only logged in one time to see what.
And you have all your residents' phone numbers.
Right.
We, I, we have not had that problem.
And I was going to say, if you have 50 people that say, "The only one superintendent will wear a red pants every day of the year," we're going to know that it's an outlier and to get out of the mix. I mean, if it's outlandish, then we'll know, you know what I mean? So, I think you can trust me that we could work with this before.
Right.
Even if it's 11 million texts, it's in the medical, he's a person that takes care of their kids, that's mine, so that one, that one, that one, does that make sense?
It does. I think it's more the political pieces out there, that you've got two sides of the spectrum of, you know, opposites that are going on right now, that that would be the thing, like, I guess we want this more than we want this, and that's what the community said. I mean, we just did one recently, I mean, we were critical of them, and the name that went out there, and one rose up above the rest, but, you know what I mean, like it's, there's, so I agree. I mean, I'm on the page, I think this is a little concerning for it, but...
And I understand your point, Holly. It's, and obviously we want to keep the politics out of it as much as possible. Once upon a time, that was a done deal with schools. We never had to worry about it. Things have changed. We all know that, but it's, again, we have not had the problem. And I've done, you know, 45 searches, and that has not been a concern whatsoever. Our organization has done, you know, hundreds of them, and we have not had that problem. So, I think we'll be able to see those if that's the case, whether it's far right or far left and these things are coming out. We have to use some common sense too. And remember, when we talk about the characteristics, the traits, the qualifications of people, are we going to list something, "Well, you can only be a Republican," or "You can only be a Democrat," or, that's not, you know...
So, how do you issue specific, and this board is not trying to answer this specifically because it's an issue of character that will do a test of kids, so I think that will probably take care of itself.
And, yeah, and I'm like, and as you look at the three questions that are going to be asked, they're, they don't lend themselves particularly, you would have to strain yourself to answer them in some sort of playful way, so I think that might be...
I think number two, because that's why, I think number two is...
Some of the challenges, right.
I would say, that's exactly what it's asking.
But again, the challenges probably are, they're not going into the posting or profile. Those are going to give, that's going to give me information to help convey to candidates what some of the concerns might be. And it's no different if I'm sitting with a small group and doing this with a focus group, if those challenges, those comments come up, I'm not there to filter them. I'm there to report back what I heard, because I'm sure there will be comments made that I personally don't agree with, but that's not my position. And I think I understand that. Okay? All right, so then, we have the posting closing on October 20th. We usually have it close on a Friday. October 26th, I would meet with the Board of Education. That can be a very long meeting. I've been behind closed doors with the board for up to four and a half hours before because you're going through resumes, applications, letters of interest, and so forth. It's the one and only time in this entire process that you can go into closed session, and it's if and only if the candidates request confidentiality. 100% of the people I've ever worked with have requested confidentiality, so I'm going to anticipate that's going to continue to be the case. Sometimes from out-of-state people, they check the box wrong, I give them a call and say, "Okay, this is what your answer really means." "Oh, can I change it?" So, they'll send me an email, a text, or something that I have in writing that they wish to change that.
Could I ask you, are we able to see that raw data between, if I even, the face access, is this the first time we ever see the state?
No, no. Confidentiality. Remember that. If I give it to you ahead of time, it's public information. So, we are, I'm going to be the holder of it. I will bring everything with me that night. You will have plenty of reading materials, so if you need reading glasses, you need Coke, Pepsi, coffee, whatever, I would just suggest we get started as early in the day as possible for that meeting, because it can be a long one. And the district may want to consider having snack, like lunch, dinner, whatever it might be, because it can be. Now, maybe we only have 10 applicants that you're going through, and maybe six of them are top-notch. You're probably going to focus on six of them, might get through quicker. But that night, once you're done reviewing the information, and you cannot deliberate in closed session, so you can't talk about candidates back and forth, you could ask me clarifying questions regarding their applications, and I can share that information, but you cannot deliberate nor can you make any decisions in closed session. So, all these candidates are going to be numbered or lettered. I usually number them. Number one isn't any better than two or two better than three. It's just the way they come off our system. So, when we are in closed session, we're going to practice talking about numbers, not names, and I can screw up just as easily as you can, so I'm going to go on record with that. Once we come out to open session, we have a process we'll use that each one of you will talk about the candidate by number that you would like to bring in for an interview. I will keep track of that. Once we decide, let's say a motion is finally made, I would like to interview candidate 2, 4, 6, and 8, and that's approved, I would actually step out of this room very quickly, and I'd make four phone calls up to candidate 2, 4, 6, and 8, to make sure they will accept an interview and to slot them in a time. So, it's going to be a very quick phone call to the candidates. They will know that ahead of time because they'll know when we're reading. They'll know that if I make a call to them, it's going to be a 30-second call, so be ready for that. And then when I come back into the room, I can announce who we're going to interview, what their current position is, and when they're going to interview. It is public information at that point. Okay? And we'll have a little press release blurb ready to go out to the public that we can put on the website, we can send it to staff. If we have a district connector somehow, we can send it out and do that as well. Again, full transparency, and then the rumor mills will be going, and then the board members will receive lots of comments individually, and you should listen to the people that are going to comment to you. Doesn't mean that you take what they say as gospel, but you need to listen to comments and politely tell them thank you, and we'll take that into consideration. Okay? Then, we will also... Then, we will also, we'll set those interviews, right now, we have them for November thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth. I've never had a board interview more than six. Typically, we do it two per night, so we've got room for six there. If we ended up with seven, we'd find one night to do three. Or if we had, it's hard to add dates when you get later on, so we'd have to figure that out. But if we only interview four, we'll do it in two nights. All right? There is no discussion of candidates after night one and night two. If we have a night three of interviews, when we're done interviewing, you're gonna have time to process, and you're gonna make a decision on who you would like to bring back for the final interviews. Now, we will also have input from the audience that can be shared with the Board of Education. It'll be written input. Once upon a time, they used to always have the audience ask questions to the candidates. The first round is a scripted interview. That means every candidate gets the same question. If you start letting the audience ask the question, all of a sudden, the questions for candidate A can be different than candidate B. And some of the questions can be off the wall. When I was in Chelsea, I interviewed, they had somebody stand up in the audience to ask me a question, and the question was, who was my favorite Beatle? Okay? I didn't take any classes on that in college to prepare for a superintendency, but you get my drift. We've had, once upon a time, we would see a union, teachers' union, that liked candidate A over candidate B, so they started asking questions, softball questions to candidate A, and much more difficult questions to candidate B. That's not fair. All right? So we wanna be careful of that. So it's a scripted interview the first time through. We will help you with the questions. We can do that via email. Again, I will give you a list of a multitude of questions you can choose from, but you will also have the ability to add your own questions if you would like. I will then write the interview and get it back out in your hands, plenty of time to review it, take comments, revise as we need, and so forth. So that's why I need you to be able to respond to emails. Okay? So that's the first night, or first section of interviews. The second interviews, we've got two nights again. Most boards have two final candidates, but again, that's up to the Board of Education. As I stated previously to you, I do not make any decisions in this process. You make them all. I'm gonna give you information to help you make those decisions. I've had people only bring back one candidate, and I've had districts bring back as many as three. I've never had more than three. So we've got two nights set aside, just in case. In between the first and second interview, we'd like to have a visitation to the district by the candidates. And I may need some board member help on that, where you actually usher the candidates around. You are not giving the tour of the facilities. The principals are doing that, maybe with a teacher, and it gives the candidates a good understanding of, of the district and, and what's out there, what the facilities are like, some of the programs are like. They spend X number of minutes in each building, and they move on, so the board member would have to be the timekeeper to keep them on time moving from building to building, because if you don't do it, principals will keep these candidates much longer than is scheduled. And every one of them will do it, so we're gonna, we're gonna curtail that. But you're there to also take a look and measure their soft skills, how they get along with people, how they, what kind of questions they ask and so forth. And then we'll gather input from that as well, which will help in your decision-making. All right? And typically, the board members that usher the candidates around will give a report back to the board before a final decision is made. All right? Now, after the second set of interviews, again, we're gonna ask you to make a decision. Who would you like to enter into contract negotiations with? Or who do you want to hire? Contingent upon successful contract negotiations. We're always gonna have that contingency clause in there to give both sides an out if it doesn't work. So we wanna be careful of that. We've had some districts that have asked the question, how come we can't wait two weeks to make a decision? You can't. You're gonna get all kinds of political pressure from staff, from administrators, from the public, you ought to hire this, Uncle Joe's the best answer for you because he's my relationship and this and that. You have all the information to make a decision. So I think I've had forty-four out of forty-five districts make the decision the same night. Okay? And then you're into contract negotiation. So in the meantime, you need to get your contract vetted by your, by your school law firm, to make sure everything is up to date in it. We can get that blank copy. Kristen, you may wanna set up a negotiating team on the board who will negotiate the contract with the new superintendent. I would not use your HR department to do that, no offense to that, but that's gonna be their boss. They shouldn't be negotiating the contract for their new boss. It's the Board of Education that should be doing that. Now, you may want help from your attorneys. We provide help as, as needed as well. We've negotiated or helped negotiate a lot of contracts with people. Please remember, it is a negotiation. This is not a one-way street. You're trying to find the best superintendent you can to lead this district. They're trying to find the right fit as well. So it's not a one-way street. Please understand that. Many times, candidates are here interviewing the board, same time you're interviewing them. But then, it's a matter of getting a contract done, having a special meeting, and then we would try to have the person on board here January first. So those are the dates I have in mind, and I will be extremely honest, saying I know they fit into my schedule, but if there's any alterations we need to make, we certainly can do that as well.
One thing, we've been saying this before, is we visited Carmel'sburg when we were, you know, interviewing Dan and other people, you know, people have come here, will be a staff, different positions. Have you done that in the past?
Again, haven't done that for four or five years. Board members, the world is much smaller with technology, and Dan was probably hired in the same way I was hired. The board came up to my district to, they had me set up twenty or twenty-five people to talk to. Through our application process, please understand, we don't ask for letters of reference. We've never read a bad one. Why do we need to keep reading them? And it's kind of the same thing. Dan got to pick those twenty or twenty-five people you got to talk to, just like I did. Kind of the same thing of who is manipulating a system to a degree. Not that you mean to do that, but it can happen. The connections will be out there. Once these candidates are listed in the public of who is going to be interviewing for this position, the networking and grapevine will start to grow immediately. Your teachers' unions are going to be in direct contact with the teacher unions from those other districts. Your administrators, if your high school principal has a connection over that district, there's gonna be phone call. There's going to be a lot of input gathered behind the scenes that none of us are even aware of.
And then you guys, if you're there, we have to figure out a way to make yourselves available to access that, but you don't have any, it's all behind the scenes, how did the board get to hear that?
Because if there's something that is outlandish there, you're going to hear it. And as you go through that, if you hear about any red flags, I would tell you, contact me. All right? Let me know, let me do the work on it. Because not every red flag you see out there is bad. For example, a couple of years ago, we were dealing with somebody from the east side of the state. They were an assistant superintendent. They were taking over as a superintendency July one. The previous superintendent left them three very difficult personnel issues to deal with. The new superintendent handled them with full board support and without any fanfare. That November, they passed the largest bond issue they've ever passed. All right? And as you talk to board members, every board member, old and new, gave all the credit to the superintendent, the time, the energy, everything that went into that. Come January, four new board members were elected. They immediately walked into the superintendent's office and said, we'd like to go a different direction. So headline, superintendent loses her job. Did the superintendent do everything that needed to be done in that district? Absolutely. Had complete support from the staff, but board members make the decisions, and you've gotta realize that. So, now, he could have probably tried to fight that, but he decided to go find something else and landed on his feet. But things like that can happen. You know, we, we ask questions about lawsuits, we ask questions about driving records, we're, we're trying to find out everything we can. And the good thing about MLI, again, is we have the networks and the connections across the state to find out just about anything, anybody. So we try to do that.
Do you anticipate any issues here, if I'm looking at it, the first round interviews, the visits from the district, and final interviews, that all looks right around Thanksgiving?
Yes. So we probably have them in here that Monday and Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving, in my mind. And they'll, they'll see this schedule as well, and, and I'll have that conversation. The one thing that you can be assured of is I will have a lot of communication with these candidates as we go through this process. So that night where you select the candidates to interview, I've talked to all the top candidates that day or the previous day to make sure they're still interested, because I do not want you to pick out four candidates to interview, and then two of them say, ah, not really interested. No surprises. It's gotta be the mantra. Okay? So I'm gonna stay right on top of these candidates. I know you have Mrs. Rodell here, I've worked with her husband before and so forth. That's what we do. We have to, we have to communicate. There's no if, ands, or buts about that to all parties in this process. What about those dates, then?
I presume that you want my calendar to be real quick? Just so I can make sure that I don't have anything on the calendar. I don't think I do, but I just wanna double check while I can, so...
Just to the point that we, our Wednesday first to Friday, after Thanksgiving, a lot of parents tend to take advantage of that too, because they're staffed and that, and we don't, I mean, everybody's in places, they're pretty normal workdays, right? Okay. Just if somebody's gonna come in, you know, like the two business as usual.
Right. No, understand.
So, so, a question, you talked about not going to HR, or how do you start a base sort of contract negotiation, that like, what, what do we, like, what do we as a board look at, like, you know, is there, like, we have guys about twenty at our district, you know, like, doing a bug different presentation, how, like, these things, time off, with this base package, or things like that, that there's guidelines that we have to kind of navigate through that? And then we actually probably have to go to HR and ask them, are we able to afford this, or they just tell us, ahead of time, here's a lot of money that you have to...
No, good, good point. There's going to be a document coming from your attorney that's gonna include the basic language of the contract. And in that, you'll see things as vacation days, or personal days, or sick days, or whatever it might be. There will be other things you add that'll be in there, whether, you know, the salary, the annuity, what other kind of benefits are in there, health benefits and so forth. You have a current contract to look at, and we can do some homework if needed, or the HR can, as far as other districts similar to a Forest Hills, what the pay is, what the benefit package is, and so forth. So all of that could be done ahead of time.
So if we, if we present it to the person or the persons, right, so here's what we're willing to offer, at some point, they can come back, right, because it's a negotiation?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not like a, there's a dumb deal, and there's some back and forth that...
Yes.
Has to be a negotiation, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, negotiations, I would assume, could also impact start date. I mean, I would get a little concerned that a start date of January first might limit some of our options. But that's something maybe determined during negotiation.
It, it could be, or we'll, we'll get a handle on that as I'm talking to the candidates as well. I could see that somebody may say, I'd like to make it through the first semester, and our semester ends January twentieth. So if I could go to the twenty-second and start, you'll know that ahead of time, so that, that could be a possibility. I, I could see that happening.
And when Dan came in, it was July first, but he came once a month, so it's like you made the commitment, but you're just gonna, you know, come in and sort of do a transition over the four months, and so be in the meantime, July first?
Yeah. Like, you wanna stay in there, district, until the end of the year, and they just start to come over and work with, with our internal...
Okay. Well, yeah, and that's what I'm thinking, as you're talking to candidates, then you would get a feel for someone's like, I'm very interested in this, but the facts are, I need to finish the school year in this district for whatever reason it is.
Yeah, and I don't think we're going to hear that. I think we might hear, we need to extend it time to a semester time if at all possible, or would the board consider February first because of this situation in our district and so forth? I did the same thing Dan did by the sounds of it. I worked two days in one district and three days in another, and went back and forth a little bit, and that worked out fine, that was part of that transition. Other, other districts, they may tell the candidate, fine, go when you wanna go, and we're gonna get somebody to come in. That, that can happen too.
Have you found that districts have been supportive? In other words, like, a superintendent leaving in January is going to make it so much easier for them to find a candidate, their own candidate or a superintendent, if the superintendent's coming from another district? Been plenty of time. I, everyone's confused looking, so I don't know what to say.
Well, that, I, I think start date, I think, I think start date to read as like hire-by date. Like, we have somebody then officially locked in, and so it's announced, and their district knows, and our district knows, and then if they're here, they're first...
Yeah, I would think hired-by is different.
...versus July...
Yeah, if they figure, once they're, they're starting, their district is like, you know, so if their district realizes that they have a superintendent, they might leave, and they'll be ready to take it down to January first, and join with that cycle of, you know, cycle of the interview process, which...
October twenty-sixth, that night, we select the candidates. October twenty-seventh, those districts will know that their superintendent is interviewing.
Yes.
Now, the other thing that happens, let's say, there's twenty people not interviewing that you reviewed applications for and so forth. Remember, this information is closed session, and that, those names or positions cannot be divulged by any of you, and there's, there's consequences for doing that. Can be criminal, can be civil. So there's a sense of confidentiality that is absolutely crucial as we go through this. Please understand that.
So I, I think, Kristen, I know, I think maybe your point is, like, we've talked about, like, if you scare people away, they can have you generally personally thinking maybe July first, and we've talked to different points, why we picked. So is there a way to flip the verdict, so it is not, you need to hire them, it's, it's by this, or at least by July first, at least they know the start date is negotiable between...
Yeah.
So that's, I mean, like, if it, I don't wanna scare anybody away, if they think, oh, who would go July first, you know...
We, we can certainly put anticipated start date January first, and as I talk to the candidates too, you know, we, we can make it very, very clear that the board is willing to make this work. Sounds like you're gonna have an outstanding interim superintendent come in, and you're gonna be in good hands that way, so, you know, we, we wanna make this transition as smooth as possible, without a doubt.
It's our responsibility, yeah, right? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we, we can certainly do that. That's, that's not a problem. Okay, what, what else do I have for you? I really don't think there's anything else. Any other questions you, you can think of? You all have my phone number, email address, and so forth? Any questions? All you gotta do is holler.
I have two simple ones, just related to, to stuff over the summer, essentially. We've got a star already working on our, doing our websites and, you know, communicating locally. Do you guys do any type of, you know, again, word is probably around, but especially outside of the state, or just do these channels through the summer, just saying, hey, fall is gonna be the time for more stills, keep it on your radar? Do you start to put this in all?
It's already been...
It's already there.
And, you know, one of the things about starting early, the Fall Conference is the biggest conference in the state of Michigan for superintendents. And we will be up there, I think it's gonna be Pete and I representing MLI this year, in fact, so we will be talking and recruiting as we're up there too. But MLI has already put it out there that we are going to be working on this.
When is that, Dan?
Twenty, maybe the twentieth of September?
So we, yes, we should profile that, huh?
Yeah, so we'll, and, you know, I may start getting phone calls anytime on this. Please realize that, and, you know, it's, it's, it's important that we handle all this information the right way. I will be doing checks on people all the way up until the hire date that you guys, in case something does come up. And I had a situation come up before, where we hired in the summer, July first hired, and meeting with the Board of Education on July fourth, or July fifth, I think it was, and something came up July first that the board needed to know, because it was a separation agreement with the district and the superintendent, that neither the superintendent... with the district and the superintendent, that neither the superintendent nor the district could talk about legally until after July 1st. But July 1st hit, and it kinda made the decision for the Board of Education. So we don't stop checking things out. If we hear them, we're gonna go after the information to find out what's really true out there. So that's why, if you guys hear something, let me know, and I'll pull everything together for you. Okay?
Two more things.
Sure. Focus group, how do we do that? Do you, do you work with VALE to try to select people that would, if it's boosters, here's all the presidents of the boosters across the organization, let's send an invitation to them? Or do you just post and say, "If you're at booster and you're interested, let me know, and we're putting a focus group together"?
Every district has done that differently to meet their needs.
Okay.
So if you're gonna do, it might be the officers of the boosters club. It might be four people from the athletic, four people from the music, four people from the academic boosters. There's just different ways to do that, but I don't wanna tell you exactly the process you have to follow to identify those, because you may have a better way of doing that, because you know your community better than I do.
You don't have a recommendation, just go out and look this past?
Yeah, yeah. Again, I'm gonna walk in here, and 12 people show up for the first hour, and three for the second, and 26 for the third, so be it. I'm still asking the same questions, gathering the same information, trying to get a good handle on Forest Hills, and what is expected from this community. And the community means everyone, teachers and staff, and so forth as well.
And how do you guys do that, to maybe some, please send our ideas of groups to Val, together with, or, I'm wondering, the very first thing I'd like to know, I mean, do you bring it together, or can you bring it up to us, is what are, like, the whole, the wholeness of, of interested community groups? I mean, just to start with, what are we even looking at? Like, you mentioned Rotaries, yes, we have every club, like, I mean, what are all the groups before we even start to say, "Okay, what do we hold on to"?
Well, that's what I was thinking, like, we sign to all of our brains, or...
Either way, yeah, chicken or egg, probably.
And we have, well, if we, because we have all our brains on it, though, if we're, like, say, in general, people would create Google that, right? We can't do that, though, no, because that is discussion.
So maybe that's...
You mean essentially, Val?
At some point, we'll just bring our list and talk about it next week.
Or if people wanted to individually go, this is a list of groups that I can think of that are important, and send them to Val, and Val can just sort of go through, I mean, not to give you more on your plate, but, you know, you're...
Your central office administrators, and Dan, is another good resource of the groups they think are important to talk to, because they've been working with those groups all along. So compiling that list and sending individually your thoughts to Val, and she can compile it, you're not making a board decision on this. This is not really a board decision, it's kind of a cumulative think tank that's trying to do what's right for the district. We're not gonna ask for a board motion for the groups you're gonna have to speak with. That's not the purpose.
Talking about it, would constitute a war business? I mean, talking about it, did you email it something?
Well, making a decision to omit groups and keep groups on, you can make that decision.
It's not a full, like, it's not a...
It's not a questionable decision.
Must just be... Right, but who's making the decision? The question is, is who's making the decisions to only put so many groups out there? That's, that would be, that's, that's the question, right? Like, if you say, if you have 15 groups, and we're narrowing it down to 10, that's a decision. That's a slight, that's a decision, that's being offered. So to be, my question is, is it, is it bad to send something out? If we're transparent with public and get this out, do we ask the public what groups they would like to see to have an input, in case we list anybody, and it's probably the same place? I'm just, I'm gonna just throw it out there, so we're not, we're not making a decision. Public sending us ideas for a group.
And suspect that we do not all define term group in the same way in the physicals. Like, what is a group? Is it a club or an organization, or is it a stereotyping of a human? Like, what is it that we are really saying we want in groups? Again, so that sounds like literally just every possibility.
Yeah, those are the obvious.
I know, but it's stereotyping, I don't think we wanna get there.
Well, I know, that's what I'm getting worried when we say, though, "Let's ask the whole community for all these groups, the things that we're going to..."
And these are...
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, there's groups that we may not even be aware that are out there that have a great impact on it, that don't always rise to the surface all the time that we see, you know? There's, I mean, a lot of things that I'm finding out, but I'm not talking about your political driven groups, I'm talking about, you know, in just a general, that there's, you know, people are like, "Hey, what about..." Like, if you say staff, you know, there's, like, there's custodians, there's, you know, support staff, there's, I mean, there's, you know, different things. I know working in the district before, that you can kind of see where, you know, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of groups just on that, it's not just staff and the core people, there's a lot of groups within staff. So that, that's, I just don't wanna, I just don't wanna miss anybody, and then have that be later, like, "Well, what about, you know..." So I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there as a, as a, you know, a wise way to start, and then we just kind of, you know, go from there, but...
Well, I think my concern really wasn't, and I understand all the various groups that are involved, that much I know that we would be obviously trying to not lose the one. Mentioning, "Let's turn to the community to identify groups that we're not thinking of," is just where I get a little hung up on what that exactly means, what we would expect to be seen with groups we wouldn't be thinking of.
I think, given the broad range of people we have, and the broad connections that we have at different levels within the district, that we can all probably come up with some really great ideas of groups that should probably be included. So what I'm gonna suggest is that if you have ideas of groups that you think should be included, that we send, you send them over to Val, she'll start compiling the list, and then I can get together with Val, and we'll look through the list and go, "All right, what makes, what makes good sense to make sure we get a representative sample of everybody?" Like, I don't think this needs to be, like, sent out for a vote among the community, and it's like, nah, it's not even a board vote kind of thing, it's just, we wanna make sure that we have everybody there and included that needs to be included. And I think as long as we go into it with that expectation, that's what we're trying to achieve of including all the groups that need to be included, we'll be in, we'll be fine.
That comment about Dan, those, what, groups in the community, I guess, are involved in our schools.
And that's, that's a key to it, Mallory, is the involvement in the schools. So if we have a group out there that has really no attachment or no involvement in school, that's not what the focus group is about. They can go on the website and complete the information via the survey. We, the focus groups are people that the school district has worked with, feels it important to gain that input from. So that's why when I talk about the athletic boosters, I talk about the service clubs, those people are probably involved with the school district to some degree. But I hate to mention any name of any group out there, because I'll be wrong, so I won't do that.
Yeah, different groups are involved in different school districts.
Right, well, and they, and they have different purposes out there. These are the ones that you have worked with as a school district that you think we ought to meet with. So that's, that's kind of the clarifier there. And that's, that's another point, when, when, Holly, you talk about going out to the public and so forth. Just remember, you're going to get a lot of input through this process, but the seven of you make the decision, not the community. It's the seven of you that have been entrusted by the community to make this decision. So please, please understand that. I'm not making any decisions for you.
The other thing I should say is, we applaud you a couple times to ask for help as we try to figure out a higher interim. Thank you, it has been wonderful to have access to such experienced, respected people and trade, and it's...
Called old age.
Yeah, me, too.
Not a problem. Now, what about, the one question we haven't addressed yet is the national posting. Is that, do we want that? That was an extra cost in our proposal, I think it was $1,400, if I remember. We would put that out, if you wanted to go that route, we would do that with the final posting that goes out there with a profile attached. We'll get the initial one out statewide and so forth, but the, we wouldn't do the national posting until middle of September, and I'll try to meet or beat that 15th date.
Here's an awkward question you might not know. Do you have any feel for how many times that national posting has put you in a position that you otherwise would not have been in?
I'm going to say not very often. We already get applicants from as far north as Canada, we get them from Florida, we get them from Texas, we get them from California, we get them from Washington. By posting within the state, because anybody that wants to come here is looking at the state, usually the MASA site, to gather that information. But we can do it, that's, I'm just, that's, that is a board decision on whether you wanna spend the money on that or not. And we've done it for several school districts. One school district I think of that really pushed it hard, we did it for, they wanted to even go further internationally and so forth, I don't think, and they hired somebody from within state. It's, it's, Michigan's tough to move into. It's a different finance system, it's a different set of regulations, and not that somebody from the outside can't do it, but it can be difficult to move into.
But now, the national, be the National Association of Black Superintendents?
The Latino we had in there, and the general ASA, which is the American Association of School Administrators.
I don't know, to me, I would like to make sure we posted those groups personally, just because if, if you're not advertising, if you're advertising, do you always advertise? You won't always get a diverse pool.
Question for that, if we go outside, like, a national posting, and somebody comes in, let's say, from Florida or whatever, and we decide they're gonna be a top, do we start, do we start paying for travel expenses? I mean, that's an additional onto the posting, right?
The initial interview is usually on the back of the applicant. After that, we've had some districts that have offered to say, "We will pay for the flight and the accommodations for the second interview and/or visitation."
I think we spread it out, but I just wanna know what, what, what the, you know, the additional cost would be, you know, that, that, yeah, unfortunately, that...
Yeah. And remember, hopefully, this is going to be another Dan Beam or Michael Washburn situation. When you look at the cost, seeing if somebody's here for 17 or 20 years, what's the real cost of that, it's pretty, pretty miniscule.
And just to give you a feel for it, our contract amount when we hired Dan was $16,000, and our ultimate expenditure was $31,000. You know, by the time we paid for travel and visiting Carmanay's worth and whatnot, just to give you a feel for what it was last time, so...
Well, you were expensive. So...
Well, since you mentioned it, Mallory, I just wanna say for everyone that I'm also in favor of the extra costs to cast that nationwide. You never know, and it does offer the opportunity, or promote that opportunity, to people we would never have expected.
So the board can make a decision on that whenever that's appropriate. We have a little bit of time, but it would be nice to know that that's going to happen, so we can get ready for that as well. Okay? All right? I'll sneak out of here unless you have something about a wife's birthday dinner tonight, so... Thank you.
Appreciate your time coming up. Okay, the next item is the interim superintendent contract. So can I please have a motion to approve the contract?
Yep, after the motions, yep.
So, will we just have it open after discussion?
Correct.
Well, we're, motion then to approve the contract and the terms currently shown in the document that we've reviewed, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you making that motion, CJ? Are you making that motion?
I would like to make that motion, yes, that we approve.
Second, okay. Discussion on the interim superintendent contract. I, I guess my first, there it is. I guess my first question would be, is, before this came to us for negotiation, has Mrs. Schubel seen, seen this, and that's what the adjustments were? Dr. Schub, before, before it came to us, like...
And so, I sent out a two Friday, I said...
Right.
Oh, sorry. Sent it to you on Friday and said, you know, she will be receiving this Monday morning, knowing that the two of them are meeting this week.
But there's been changes that have made, been made to it.
Right, so they, she received it Monday, Christine and Dr. Schubel met Tuesday, and they made some changes as a result of that meeting, which are reflected in this version. Makes sense?
Yes, so I guess, I guess one of my concerns that I have walking into this is that we were in contract negotiations with several, seven other groups right now that are our team here at Forest Hills, and I feel like we're, I, I just think this is a little exuberant, that's just, you know, where I'm coming from, as far as somebody who's coming here to help us out for a year. I think there's some things here that I would, I would like to walk through, and I know that there's, there's a piece of the puzzle, I think, that this is how it is, or how this is how you do for an interim, although, at the same time, the part of negotiations is, is that we don't offer the top pile first, you kind of start on, and then there's that little in-between of back and forth and negotiations to go through, and I, I think that's kind of where I'm at. I mean, I was adding up, there's a lot of days that, between sick days, vacation days, holidays, that, I mean, you're, you're talking about an additional package that, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's about $20,000. And when I started figuring out the times that we're even at school, then we, it was like 180 days, right? 180 days, or 260. So I kind of figured, based on about 36 weeks, is that, is that our 40 weeks? Is that about right, usually? Maybe it's 42, because you get some time off in the summer.
But it's a, there, it's a 52-week position.
Okay, so, it just seems like a lot to, I mean, I think what I'd like to see is, if you're gonna grant somebody vacation days, are they gonna get 25 straight days? So now they're gonna be gone for another five more weeks? You know, you've got 20 days of interchangeable sick and personal days, that's another four weeks, and you've got holidays that we have, I'm guessing, I try to add up the holidays, and I'm probably missing some of the time that we're off or on. On the average, you've got maybe 15, another 15 days there, and it's like, I, I guess I'm under the impression we're hiring somebody to run the school and not have an opportunity to be gone, there's a lot, it's almost like 10 weeks worth to be gone, you know, from the, from the school. So I guess, I don't know if, I mean, I'm, I would like to see some parameters set up as regards to, I mean, this is, most people get offered two weeks vacation when they come into a new job, and I know that they've been all along in a school system, but they haven't worked for Forest Hills, and it's, I just think this is like, I, it seems to be, it seems to be a lot for what it is, and there's a couple of other things, too, but I guess that's the first one I kind of wanted to address, is, is, I would, I'm guessing that's negotiable, because these are, these are changed from what your first original contract had stated, and, and I'd also like to have it, if they're gonna, if we can put some parameters on it, that they're not taking vacation, you know, before January 1st and using all this time. I mean, is there some parameters that we can put around, around this contract that you can't take so many days up, you know what I mean? Because if we only go up to January 1st, do they get to use all, if we hire somebody by January 1st, do they get to use all of this, is my question?
I guess, because, yeah, I, I hear your concerns, and they're, I, they're valid. I think the overarching thought that I have about this is that we're hiring somebody to be a full-fledged superintendent for a year. This is the same contract that we would have on our current superintendent, or any other district would have, you know, would in theory write for their permanent superintendent. And the verbiage lines up very closely with only the couple of samples that we were able to see to, to help us guide in this, and that the, the terms that I see in there look very standard for what an interim kind of contract looks like. But the, the same expectation is true for, for Superintendent Bean. He could take four weeks off in December, and then uses personal days to take the entire month of January. So like, some of that, you know, it's not written into anyone's contract, right? I mean, you can't, you can't write out all of the possible abuses of things, but as a respected professional, someone who's done this for her entire life, I, I don't know, I think some of that is, I don't know, trusted that's built in, or does that abuse is not to take place like that?
Well, in addition to trust, just so you know, the Patrick says, "The administrator must provide written notification to the board president of her intent to use vacation days with at least 10 days advance notice." So if she goes to Kristen and says, "I'm gonna take October and November off," Kristen's gonna say, "That's not gonna happen." You know, so I think we're covered there, to make sure that we stretch this out in a way, and she's here when she needs to be here. And CJ's right, she's so excited to get here, Dan's never used all of his days, ever, so, you know, it's just, that is what's the interim, the interim, the industry standard right now that we're offering to our interim.
I like how you're describing it as industry standard. I think an important thing to recognize here, too, is this is not an entry-level position of somebody who's going to be...
I think an important thing to recognize here too is this is not an entry level position of somebody who's going to be growing years in advance in our district and building up to something. This is somebody coming in with absolutely all the experience and skills that we want. We might look at that almost as top level of of coming into a job here. So I I think that just needed to be clarified.
One thing I would add is that we are not the one, we're not setting a standard here with this. We're not the one leading the way. There are other interim superintendents in the district. And from what I understand, that this was modeled off of those other interim superintendent job or contracts. And so if we were to somehow pull back on this, we would be trying to offer her something less than other interims in the area are getting, which is not really where we want to be.
Right, but the whole term negotiation means there's some room for negotiation and we're at the top and it and it went up higher. So I guess that was just one, I mean, that was just kind of one, that the second one was also contributing to somebody's, you know, four oh three B. And if this person, I mean, if Sarah with Dr. Schubel stays on till only January first, are we still offering? I mean, you've got two different payments, they're basically back to back. They're they're a day apart or not a day apart, but they're you at the end of the end of December. And then you've got January first to June thirtieth. So she stays on to January tenth, does that mean the other twenty two thousand five hundred dollars goes into the account? So I mean, I think there's like, I want some parameter, that's what I'm looking for is some parameters. Like, I think this contract negotiation for her to stay on till July first, twenty twenty four.
It does say in there, the paragraph right above it, it says that should the board and administrator agree to reduce the number of days required to fulfill the contract, that could be later per week or overall, compensation and annuity shall be reduced by a commission amount.
Right.
Right, that's under compensation, that's not under, is that you're including that under additional compensation?
It says compensation and annuity, so both of those factors would, it would be prorated.
So with the workdays too, that was the other question I have too with insurance. I know she has her own insurance coverage, right, for dental and different things. But we still have to pay for insurance because she's working more than thirty two hours a week, correct? By law? And why is that?
Christine, do you want to explain that one?
Yeah, not if she waives the insurance, she does have them available through other means. So you don't have to provide double insurance. To your previous question also, under the termination clause, it states that if the contract is terminated early, that both salary and annuity will be prorated. So it's actually two different spots in the contract.
Thank you.
Just it just seems.
Do you think we should be all paying her less or?
I just think there should have been something that was presented. I mean, when when you when you go to hire somebody, you don't offer your top, you know what I mean?
I don't think we did though, I don't think we offered some crazy amount and then she bit us up even further, you know? I think we just offered what is an appropriate amount for the position, you know? We're not trying to lowball somebody and save the last, you know, dollar possible. Is my view on this? I mean, I think we presented her a fair offer, she said, that does look fair. I would, you know, I'm thinking this and this and this tweak type of thing. And and the terms that were agreed upon seem to be pretty standard again throughout.
Right, and the negotiation happened between her and Christine and niece.
Yeah, like we.
So, yeah, I was like, we're we don't negotiate. The negotiation happens between them and as the board, we approve or not approve as we see fit.
And keep in mind, the two, Kaledonia and Northview are both working with interim superintendents right now whose contract is exactly the same as the superintendent. Ours is not quite the same. When you Sparta and Charlevoy, Char M, what does Char M stand for? Charlevoy? Emmett, thank you. Also are working through interim superintendents. And again, not only are they the same contracts, but one of them says the assistant soup will receive, the interim will receive all the fringe benefits they received as an assistant soup. So there are other districts doing a little more than we do, you know? So it's not that we're offering tabdallah, we're again doing industry standard. This is just how it's going with other interims in the area.
And I was when I was looking at that and seeing that it was similar to that what our current contract is. I think of any CEO of a big company, if they had to take a leave of absence and we had an interim or a contracted person, they would absolutely get that same or if it was a contractor even more. So I guess I'm glad that it's not more.
Yeah, I guess I'm I'm to the point where we have other people that we need to pay for. And, you know, like we're walking into contract negotiations and did we hold back on them in order to do this? And so I guess my my concern is just there's, it's a lot. The package originally we had talked about was supposed to be between what, two hundred and two?
Two fifty.
Right, and so we're over two fifty right now, I believe. If you add this up, we're we're closer to two sixty.
Where are you getting that?
Well, it's one ninety two.
Plus forty five.
Plus vacation.
Forty five for the annuity is two.
Right, they do vacation, I mean.
And and then that's, I misspoke, I said as far as dollars, you know, paid to the candidate, it would be less than two fifty. But yes. And just so you know, if we're talking about savings, it's very sad to me that our superintendent is paid seventh highest in the county. That between transitions in our own community and personal life, that got missed and that's sad. So I assure you, when we pay our successor, it is going to be a lot more money. And for the time being, whatever Dan's package is, costs the district four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Sarah's package will cost the district two hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars. So we will be saving the district a hundred and forty four thousand dollars by using an interim instead of whoever our successor would be and the increase in contract that they would be inclined to get. So if that makes you feel better about saving money, we are definitely saving the district money with this move.
You just said two sixty eight, does that's everything included then?
You know, again, because all her pension, insurance, those kind of costs are, don't apply.
So why are we, I mean, I'm just saying, why are we paying towards the pension for somebody who's coming up? I mean, or not, you know?
You're not, so you there's in my contract, there's the salary, there's the annuity. But then the board is paying health benefit costs that are not in this contract. Dr. Schubel waived those. The board is paying the mandated state required costs for a retiree benefit that we don't have to pay for someone who's already retired. So that's substantial, so those costs are not in there as well. You do have additional costs to employing anyone, which are FICA taxes. We have to pay that regardless. So that's going to be there on top of what the compensation is. But the total cost for me as a current superintendent and then the interim superintendent, the interim superintendent is going to be far less cost to the district. So in the budget that the board approved for the overall district, that line item is going to have substantial savings more than what was approved in the budget on that because of this interim contract.
I'd also, oh, go ahead, Holly.
No, 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 I just wanted to add on the question though, is like the the four oh, four oh three B. If she stays on, let's say till January tenth, we still pay the extra twenty two five then? That's 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 where it comes in.
That's what's going.
That's wait, okay, I just wanted to verify that. So, sorry, Christine, go ahead.
No problem. Well, one thing I'd just like to kind of bring up is I think when when we have or feel concerns about the number of sick days, vacation days, personal days, et cetera, it would be under the assumption that every single one of these days would be used. And I feel like it, most humans don't do that. Like, the benefit of the doubt here is that they're not coming into a position saying, yes, now I've got twenty five days, I'm going to use them all. Or I plan to be sick this many number of days during the year. And, I mean, I've certainly never been a superintendent, but I I well understand the busyness that happens within a school district and the immediate needs. And to be gone is is so much more difficult than to than to be here that I don't, I mean, just benefit of the doubt, right? But also what is typical, anticipate somebody taking every single sick personal and vacation day that they have available to them. Life does happen and that's why those things are there as part of that package. But I don't think that we should be acting under the assumption that somebody is going to take every single possible day off that they can. Just wanted to say that.
Right, but we still have to consider the cost and that's what I'm doing. If it comes to the point where they have to take that time off for whatever reason is, that's that's why I was, you know. The other thing too is that do we have anything in the contract? That I'd see anything that states any override or anything in case there is another pandemic, government shutdown or anything that does? I mean, I don't know what that does when you have an interim superintendent, looking into a superintendent. If if under the, you know, guys that we run into anything, I'm not trying to plan out every scenario, but I know that in my business, we all had to add it into our contracts because of what happened before. So I just, I just don't know what that is, if it's a kind of a separate thing on an insurance situation. But I didn't see anything on under this at all in case there is anything that required the contract not to end on June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, if that makes sense. And it has to do an extended, there's nothing in here that that says if we extend it, we would do it by a month to month. Or, you know, if if we have to push something out, that's that's not in here. So that was my other question as as far as that goes as well too, so I don't know if that's.
That sounds like a Christine question too.
Yeah, I think, I mean, the board would always have the right to work with Dr. Schubel to extend the contract if he chose to do that. If your concern is that there would be no work available, then I think the board still has the option to terminate the contract. So if we were to find out there's another pandemic and we're going to be shut down for three months and the truth is, we continued to work behind the scenes even when school was shut down. But if you didn't need her for some reason, you could end the contract or terminate the contract earlier if you chose to do that.
But we always have to have a superintendent.
Yes.
Correct.
You have to name somebody else in the meantime.
Right, I I understand. And then it's twenty days notice, so it says twenty working days, so I'm guessing that's four weeks notice. If there's any, I'm not saying there is, I'm just thinking if we run into anything that we have to, you know, terminate under under any grounds outside of that, we still have to give twenty days notice, correct?
Yes.
And that's standard?
It is. It's actually longer for most administrators.
Is there any further discussion on the interim superintendent contract?
Just going to share, the reason I looked at my phone is I knew I had a picture of the superintendent compensation in the county. And, you know, as far as cost savings, again, we're going to look at at least a twenty three to twenty five thousand dollar end when we go to our next superintendent, based on the differential from where we're at now and what Rockford is making. So just to add those dollars together, if the community wants to know, we're looking at a hundred and almost seventy thousand dollars lower cost right now paid to our next employee than we would if we had a full time superintendent in place.
But in the year, that's going to come back.
Right, well, again, we're saving money for a year, of course. Right, so cost savings this year, you know, yes, we're paying somebody to do the job we have to do, but we're doing it. It's significantly less than we would do if, you know, Dan stayed or we had a successor in place.
Anything else and other? All right. Since our secretary is not here, as vice president, would you do a roll call vote, please, for whether we should approve the interim superintendent contract?
Absolutely. Mr. Mashad?
Yes.
Ms. Neimeyer?
Yes.
Ms. DeBoer?
No.
Mrs. Von?
Yes.
Ms. Cavell, yes? And Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody. And I would like to give a special thank you to Christine for working diligently and getting that all taken care of in quick order. Appreciate it. Uh, next, do I have a motion to approve the consent grouping?
I move we approve consent grouping items for A and B.
Second. And any items for that anybody would like to pull out of the consent grouping? Anything you would like to point us to on this one?
No, simply pleased that we are approving the employment of a good number of teachers and thank you to everyone involved in that thorough process for finding some great teachers to recruit.
Thank you. Is there any further, any discussion on the consent grouping? It's rather short this week. I say this week, it's not this month, it's this week. Okay, could we please have a roll call vote then?
Of course. Mr. Mashad?
Yes.
Mrs. Neimeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBoer?
Yes.
Mrs. Vonck?
Yes.
Ms. Cavell, yes? And Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Informational items.
Just that I have approved a small handful of resignations, not unusual at this time of the year where sometimes we have people leaving for other professions or their spouses moving. And I've included those in the packet today.
All right, thank you. As a reminder, if anybody would like to speak a public comment, please get those in. We will pick those up at the end of the superintendent report, which we will head into right now.
All right, great. Well, I just wanted to talk about a couple of things. One is, as you know, we've been working on planning for our next bond. Question to the community, and I have a document here I just want to share with members of the board. And this is draft and this is preliminary and this is a working draft that we have. And our intent is to come back here to you in July. Also have present for the members of the board, for any questions, our architectural team and our construction management team to talk through these pieces a little bit more. These are estimated costs for projects that we would have that go out through twenty thirty one. And I know that sounds a little bit odd to think of those dates out at that point in time. And this is a list of projects that also does not add up to any increase in the tax rate that is needed to require debt on that. And so just to give you a sense, Ada Elementary, we have not been to Ada Elementary to make any improvements to their learning environments. And you see that called out here. And as you see called out for just about every single building, mechanical system, roofing, paving, sometimes with schools with playground, there are things that will are estimated to come to the end of their useful life between the time that we would ask community to weigh in on this and twenty thirty one. So you'll see those items listed. So even if you look at Collins, which we've just completed renovations, substantial renovations in that building, there are some mechanical items and there are some elements, not all, of the parking area and a few elements in the playground that we anticipate would come to their end of the useful life in this time window. And so what we don't have called out here is the exact year that each of these improvements might take place between twenty twenty four and twenty thirty one. But you get a sense of what it is that we're looking at here in an order of magnitude. As we've talked about previously, Central High School has some substantial renovations that we are looking at on that. And there again, architects could give you a sense of what those things are, not with every detail, but would be able to give you the type of things that they're looking at. And that's why we want to bring them to our first meeting in July to talk about that a little bit further with the board. And you get an idea at Eastern High School, some of the things that we're looking at, they're a little bit different than others. And we could talk about those in more detail again at the July meeting. The Aquatic Center, the recommendation here that they're looking at is a new facility on that. But again, those are all things that can generate further discussion when the architects and the construction manager come to the meeting in July. So I wanted to get this information out here, so you had some time to look at that and think about this, ask any questions in the meantime, certainly willing to talk about that. And again, we are pleased that we have such a strong community tax base that we're able to look at these projects without an increase to the tax rate. And just a reminder, last year, this board approved our lowest tax rate for retiring bonds since nineteen ninety nine. So we're in a in a good position on that. I do know there are other communities and other districts that are looking at bonds. When you compare their size to our size, they're actually larger in a per pupil basis of what they're looking at to satisfy their needs as well. So we'll see more districts that are coming out with bond proposals, certainly in this November election cycle. And there are other dates that districts could select. I wouldn't be surprised to see some in May of twenty twenty four. As we're looking at a November date, it's just a date where we can sometimes see other elements, other entities that are out there with election questions, so we're not shouldering all the costs of the elections ourselves on that. Any questions you may have on on this document? Since I know you haven't seen this before, but we wanted to provide more information, get more information out and do that in advance of the July meeting. So when you're at the July meeting, there's more detailed questions that you may be able to ask at that point in time based on this information here. All right, I'll keep moving. I have very much appreciated the opportunity to talk with members of the board about our work with the strategic plan. And I've appreciated your time on that very much. As we are looking at the strategic plan, it's it's. As we are looking at the strategic plan, it's really, how do we create additional opportunities for students at our secondary schools? And opportunities for students to really understand more of what is out there in the world after they leave high school, not only for additional opportunities to learn, but for careers and career pathways, and what does that look like? And how do students find out more about that and their own interests while they're still at secondary schools and middle and high school? And how do we involve our own community in helping students understand that more? We don't have, as I was sharing with some of you, my visit to Thematic was eye-opening. I had no idea the types of things that were happening with a business that's just a few short miles away that is, really has a global presence in that regard. And so we want to intersect more and more with members of our community, with parents and employers and the like coming in and working with our staff, working with our students, working with our teachers as well on that. So that's exciting work that we have. And also, in looking at interim superintendent with Dr. Schubel, her work in going around and talking with staff members, that's one of the things she and I, that's when I said, what's something, if your contract's approved, that you'll want to do right away? And she said, even though I'm not going to be here for a long period of time, I want to get to know the schools and the building and the people who are there. So I think that lends itself to that first step that we have in the strategic plan. A lot of what the strategic plan is about, you could sort of put this umbrella term over top of it of 21st century learning. And we have had a task force, that was impaneled by this board, of a 21st century learning task force. They were looking at some things specific to some of the pilots that we've had out there already. So in that regard, their focus was a little bit more narrow. And they were helping to look at things that resulted, for instance, in Gone Boarding 2.0, where we had a larger expansion of that particular pilot program with more opportunities for students to satisfy requirements in more content areas than we had with sort of version 1.0, if you will. What I'm looking at is something where the board, obviously with the strategic plan and a change in superintendent, is going to be able to have a group that's going to be able to provide a back and forth, not only information to the board, but also the board being able to request additional information or provide additional clarity or direction or whatever that may be on that. So I'm still thinking out loud. I don't know if that's a specific task force, if that's an element of the strategic planning process. And it's not something that needs to be decided today. It's just something that I think would be a good vehicle for the board to talk about. When this board has impaneled task forces in the past, I think back to the turn of the millennium with the Millennium Task Force, lots of information and lots of people have been involved. And it's created opportunities for people to not only understand things at a deeper level, but also advance clear communication out with large members of the community and various different constituencies. So it's something to think about in that regard. That's just where my head is a little bit on that, as I'm thinking about different task forces that we've had. And also making sure that this work we've been invested in continues forward, and we sort of personality-proof it. It doesn't matter who's sitting in this particular seat. It really matters that the organization has called out that this is important work that they want to see continue and that moves forward. So that's a little bit what I wanted to bring up here today. Any, I realize I'm not coming forward with something totally clear at this point, other than just to say it's something to think about and something the board, I'd commend to your thinking as well. So we keep the momentum moving on all of that work.
And just to add a little bit to that, that what happened is, one of the main programs Dan's referring to is the whole Gone Boarding thing. And we, I think, did a resolution in '20 because the belief was maybe this needs its own facility. And so this resolution said, look at a dedicated, you know, building. Well, once the task force was assembled and met, said, no, not the time, but this is something that could jive with our superintendent's vision. So the planning committee part of the 21st century learning task force asked Dan to sit down again before he left and said, we still want to make sure we continue with this momentum. So I think that group just wants to make sure that our young board knows that this is kind of a neat pilot. It's the first time that we've kind of let something grow. I think you all know that we gave the, one of the teachers that helped put that program together a year off. And now that program's being sold in other places. I think they just landed a, they just trained two people in Atlanta. So that's pretty cool. So that somewhat was generated out of a revenue task force that we had, I don't know, Dan, seven or eight years ago?
Yeah.
Because we're always dealing with this structural imbalance. And the idea is, we have brilliant teachers and everybody's on board with Dan's idea to, you know, rethink secondary education and come up with 21st century opportunities. There are other teachers out there that might want to do that. I know we have another retired teacher that's trying to play a role, too. So it's kind of a fun new way to figure out, is there revenue that can be brought into the district and do good things for kids in all kinds of places? I know Gone Boarding right now, I think our last royalty check was $25,000. No, on $130 million budget, that's not going to do a lot, but, you know, it's better than a poke in the eye. So just to kind of give you guys some history about the background of the, you know, 21st century learning task force and this group getting together, saying hopefully that this board will continue to stay connected to this work, which obviously we are. And the strategic plan, like Dan said, it, one of the bullet items from the group was continue to invent and reinvent curriculum that supports the 21st century learning needs. So, you know, one in the same, and this is just one opportunity by which the board can do that. Right?
Yep. Exactly. So I just wanted to put it there. It's a, it's a potential opportunity for the board here in the coming months to either look at a revised charge to a task force or to the strategic planning committee through the interim superintendent on that. I mean, any of those things, that's just a piece I just want to make sure in the transition that we don't lose sight of. And the board can be an important piece of continuity through all of that. Perfect. Last thing I have is just thank you to all of the team that's been working feverishly on all sorts of things to get ready already for the new school year. Lots of great work is already in place and looking forward to that. I'll be in a, in a new cheerleading role, but looking forward to that as well. That's all I have for today.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth, though, do we have any comment cards to bring up? While she's looking for that, we will move on to board communications. Thank you. Any board communications? No?
I, I just want to spring word off of that, because I got excited talking to Dan. In fact, we went probably a little past. But I, I think just giving kids opportunity, another opportunity, so they don't feel like they have to go down the financial path of college, you know, and we can kind of do a hybrid to bring something in that gives them an opportunity to do hands-on learning and, you know, life skills and, you know, different opportunities for them to get excited about a job in the future or being a young entrepreneur or, you know, kind of like the onboarding thing that took off. I mean, I love Next and I love what they're doing with, what we're doing with STEM. And I just, I just got excited. As a business owner who found the way of college dropout and found my way in the industry, and, you know, finding a way through it, through a different channel, I would have given anything to have this opportunity back when I was in high school, just to kind of get a feel of there's other things. I mean, we had talked about we're, we're all kind of created with our own different talents and gifts that we have. And I think it's a way to kind of show kids to foster those and, and kind of put them on a different path that doesn't always result in the end of being a lot of money in debt and putting stress on them. It gives them an opportunity. And as a business owner, it gives me an opportunity to find kids who are excited about learning and fostering and kind of helping them even with something that they want to watch. And I know there would be other business owners that would be really excited about, too. So I just wanted to say, I, you know, was kind of like, it's a fun meeting.
I love your excitement on that, Holly. And I think as people start to learn more about what 21st century learning is, they, that something everyone could kind of get behind is the connection to community that truly isn't in schools currently. In order to make 21st century work, it has to be authentic learning from people in the community. How else are you going to learn these things? So I think that's what people are going to be hopefully very excited about, is understanding that when they're asking, we want to know what's going on in the schools, we want to be a part of that, that that is an integral part of 21st century learning. It satisfies both students' curiosities, but also the way that a community wants to be part of that village, raising children as well. It's necessary in that type of education. So I'm excited.
I just have one communication in that I want to say thank you to everybody here, CJ and especially Mary, for all of the hard, hard work and extra hours that went into the firm search and the interim search. It was a lot extra. So I appreciate the time and dedication and the knowledge and resources that you pulled together for that. And also to the other members of the board for their trust in the process that the subcommittee would do the best they could for, for the group as a whole. So thank you.
All right. I have one little thing. This is our superintendent's last meeting.
No, next week.
Where?
28th. Special meeting on the 28th, next week.
Oh, I forgot about that one.
Yeah.
Nothing to celebrate here today, guys. Just another day, all right?
Nope. It was not a celebration, but I'll save it for next week.
Is it what? I don't have to go?
Oh, but I will tell you one more thing. Just so the group knows, obviously, we are a good team. And I had to deal with Mrs. Tryon to make sure I knew her schedule when we were talking with Mr. Killips. And she said, please let the group know that I've read the contract you shared and I fully support the candidate. So just wanted you all to know that as well. Okay?
Thank you. All right. We don't have any public comment cards, so we will skip over public comment. And we will move on to, can I have a motion for entering a closed session to talk about collective bargaining?
I move we go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining strategy.
Second. Voice vote? All in favor? Hi? Opposed? Okay. We are in closed session. Okay. And we are back in open session. Superintendent Beam, any closing remarks?
None. No.
That makes sense. Is there any other business before the board that we have not covered? All right. There being no further business, meeting's adjourned.